Apologize for our late start. We had a work session regarding pension and OPEB that we just finished up. So, we are going to call a meeting to order with the pleasurable deejays.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If we have approval of the minutes, I had not had a chance to go over the executive session minutes, but we're going to be on May 6th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Is there a second? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. May 13th, 2019, work session. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Next, we have announcements and presentations, so we're going to have a summary of what we just were briefed on from Nihart regarding our pension and OPEB. So, it's at the actuarial, so I'm going to call Carter up from the pension side, and we're going to get a summary on the actuarial. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Matt. My name is Carter Angel. I'm with Nihart. We are the town's actuary for both the pension plan and the OPEB plan. We'll just cover a few highlights here of the pension plan. We'll start on page six. And one of the things that we set for an assumption is the mortality table, and the Society of Actuaries, our governing body for standards of practice, professionals, et cetera, has recently performed a nationwide study of public employees and how long they live and when they're expected to die, et cetera. And generally, across the board, this public employee study reflected that public employees are living longer than the mortality table we are currently assuming. So, we would expect to make a recommendation, possibly in the next year, to move to this mortality table, which would be a better reflection of expectations for public employees as far as how long they're going to live, because that's the report, Carter, how long they're going to receive their pension, and then how long we need to die. Because that expectation, we expect to make, the recommendation, excuse me, that we would expect to make in the coming year. From a highlights perspective, page seven. So, changes from last year. Assets performed a little bit lower than expected, or about 6%, as opposed to 7.2%, which is about $1.1 million less that shortfall. Just in a one-year snapshot, it just needs to be made up over the long-term life of the plan, but we would expect assets to have a little bit of a bounce back this year, and hopefully that sort of one-year shortfall goes away. We made some assumption changes for non-public safety, and those assumption changes actually lowered the liabilities. It was a reflection of the experience study we performed in the spring of 2018, so that was a good result from that experience study. Again, we look at how the participants in the plan, the town employees, how they quit, how they retire, how they earn their salary, and the assumptions we were using weren't the best and most up to date, so we updated them, again, to reduce the liability. Hopefully, made the results again a little bit more accurate. The recommended contribution is $6.1 million for the fiscal year ending 2020. It's about in line, just a little bit higher than the fiscal year ending 2019. It's a little bit lower than expected due to just the general movement of employees in the plan. The funded percentage did increase from 64.6% to 66.8%, which is the plan, the funded entity who owns, is trending in the right direction. It's moving upward. Looking ahead, contributions are expected to steadily increase as a dollar amount. That's not unusual. It's just the way that we are funding the plan. It says a level percent of pay. We expect the percentage of pay to stay roughly flat, but the dollar amount will go up, and the funded percentage that we go up with it will get closer to 70, 80, 90, 100% funded here for the next 15 to 20 years. We are preparing a plan document for the town. The importance of the plan document is just to sort of ratify, if you will, the codify the planned provisions for each of the separate groups. There's a lot of moving pieces. It's key here. The town, Chris, and her colleagues have a specific document that outlines what employees are earning. We've always operated off the town ordinances that are there for each union or group or division. The plan document is just going to summarize and insulate the law, so just, and again, a new public plan mortality table is a possible recommendation in the coming year. Lastly, we'll just look at page 11. This is a historical look at the funding status of the plan. The red bar is the liability. Historically, the light blue bar is the market value of assets, and then the dark blue bar is the smooth value of assets, where we take asset performances and just sort of smooth them in year over year, trying to keep the contribution recommendation from jumping all over the place, again, from five years ago. We can see that the plan's funded percentage has improved from 57.6% to 66.8%. The plan is, again, on a nice trajectory to move along there. Lastly, page 22. Long-term projection of the plan contributions. Again, in our work session here, we spoke about just the plan is on a good projection or trajectory if, long-term, contributions can continue to be met, and we'll see a significant drop-off in 2035 when the plan becomes essentially fully funded there. So, contributions between now and then are feasible to be made. We see the plan being in good shape, again, as long as those contributions are able to be met.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes.
You didn't see the library funding shot I had two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, oh, Patrick. No, I had nothing to do with the library. Definitely not.
I was just bringing up Mr. Nichols that has got a brief of us on the OPEB.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt. Thank you very much.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for having me. My name is Brian Nichols. I am one of the OPEB actuaries at Nihart Consulting. I just want to give a really brief update on the OPEB plan, and if we can start on page five. It shows the balance sheet liability from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018. The liability has decreased from $43.7 million to $40.3 million. The assets increased from $5.3 million to $6.9 million, and as a result, the net OPEB liability, which goes on the balance sheet, decreased from $38.4 million to $33.4 million. We performed some long-term projections for the town, and the main takeaway from that is on page 10, in the bottom right corner. Based on the current funding policy, we're projecting by the year 2048, the plan to be 68% funded, with a total 30-year contributions of $114 million. If a slightly higher amount were to be put in, referred to as the actuarially determined contribution, or ADC, over that same time period, we could be a little over 85% funded, and have contributed $4 million less, almost $111 million. That was all I was going to discuss. Is there another slide you'd like me to go on?
Any questions to Mr. Nichols? All right, so, OPEB, we didn't have the R requirements because early on, so it's a little different analysis, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is from our Public Works Director regarding the town hall facade renovations. I'm going to call Mr. DeChicola.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tracy Donnelly from RGB is going to do a brief presentation about the building facade renovations that we're currently working on for a potential project here at town hall. It's going to be a good one if we can do it, so.
Good evening, council. My name is Tracy Donnelly from RGB Architects. I wanted to give you an update to the project we're proposing here at the town hall, starting with some exterior improvements to address water infiltration, movement in brick. You can see some photos here that are showing some cracking in the front facade particularly, some rusted lintels, some efflorescence on the brick, which shows water infiltration of salts that are coming to the surface of the brick, and steaming and other things going on with the masonry and the precast lintels that are there. As we were looking at this project, we also noticed some other issues that could potentially be addressed, and that was providing a universal accessible entrance to the main entry in the center, having one entrance to the building consolidated, and having a clear and concise facade that would lead you to this. So, we were looking at proposing central ramps that would get into a plaza, and then bring you down and changing the stair at the center entrance to a ramp, so that you would no longer have to use the limited-use, limited-action elevator at the far entrance. Come in, go down, go to the main elevator, and then, again, go up to another floor if you had business on another floor. So, that would bring you in through a series of either stairs or ramps you could take, get you to the main level, where you could access the main elevator. There's a couple of different views of that. If you go to the next slide. This just shows a night view with centrally locating the flagpole, having some uplighting in that area, and potentially some benches and some different landscape. And then, this is just another running room showing potentially what it could look like with a combination of either concrete surfaces or brick pavers, some walls to guide you along, and some can rails. And we have preliminary, run this by the historic district commission, and they have given us approval so far.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? The portion of this is in the budget for this year, correct?
Yeah. So, if we were to do any of this here, it would be the brick restoration on the front facade of the building, and then we would proceed with funding over the next few years for the courtyard, the ramp, the project itself.
Great, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like withdrawn from the consent agenda? B屬於的 與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與與
Yeah, I'm working it. I don't see a breakdown where the library is involved.
It's one of the transfers. If I have a finance directive come up, it's one of its in the transfer section, I believe. Remember, this is the reading of the ordinance on the budget. It's not the whole budget, which we have went over during the work session.
Yeah, I know that, but it's kind of important. A lot of folks here, you know, other departments have broken down. I think this paperwork is incomplete.
Hey, Patrick, is this the same ordinance format you've seen since you've been on the council?
I don't know. We never cut the budget 50%.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, this is the same format that was used last year, and the revenues and expenditures match, so if you look at the total budget, which is also within the packet, the whole budget, you'll see the library expenditures in there for the $400,000 allocation.
So, it's 841. The initial is 841 last year, level funding, right?
Last year, 841.
Now, we're here in $400,000 this year.
Yes.
Mr. Deluga, can you put that shot back up?
I just have a question. Now, we've been all through this, and... Okay. This is... Yeah, so it looks like the Nihart shot was that. In the year 2019, and this year, we have the budget spread at $1 million to the library. That includes our contribution of the red line up there. Would include the contribution of 841. Now, we're taking, we're making up that difference, but we're only getting $400,000, so we're going to kick the $441 this year, correct?
Correct.
So, my question is, what do we do in 2020?
Did you say cot? Where cotting in our allocation?
Yeah, right, yeah. So, 2020, by the time we get to December 2020, there'll be nothing to reserve at the library. We're going to lose our state funding. We're going to have a total revenue there of 645. My question is, how are we going to shore up? I mean, we're cutting today, but are we going to fund next year?
I mean, that would be my intent, yeah.
Well, why cut today?
Because there's a surplus. Let's dictate it then. Is there any other comments from the council?
So, let's get back to these numbers again, so people can understand what's going on here. So, we fund the library 841, and we receive $181,000 from the state. Presently, they have a fund balance of 686, 686 of money that's been funded by the taxpayers and is sitting in that fund. If we were to fund them 841, and they get their 181, I would like to see 600,000 come back to put the building where it needs to be today. Okay? It needs to be updated, and that's what that money is for. It's in a budget. The money's in a budget, and you use it to maintain. That's what everybody else does. So, you can get the 841, and you can get your 181. We need the 600. Now, let me just reverse this. If we give them the 680, if they keep the 686, and we fund them 400,000, we're actually giving them 1,080. Originally, they get 1,022, so we're actually funding them more. 686 and 400 gives you 1,080. That's more than a million and... Sorry. That's more than a million and 20, okay? So, they are getting more. We can't continue to fund people money, and then for them to piggyback it, bank it, and have this extra money in the account. We need this money. There's other departments that take cuts. Every year, over a million dollars gets cut from the budget before it even comes to the council. It goes to the town manager, and the town manager sits down with all the departments and starts to make cuts. So, everybody's taken a cut in the previous years, cut after cut after cut. $200,000 took care of the sidewalks on Central Street. It sure would be nice to have sidewalks down at the post office in Veterans Park. So, all the extra money that we can get our hands on to do these projects, we need it. Nobody should have these big fund balances. Now, there are enterprise funds that have fund balances, and that's because they self-sustain themselves, and they do have projects that are outlined over a course of years, so they do use their money. So, presently, I'm not interested in keep fund balancing, keep funding somebody who's got a big fund balance. If we fund balance, give them their 841 on top of the 686, they'll now have $1,005,000, okay? $1,005,000. Their expenditures of operating are only 884,000. So, how can't you run a budget on 884,000 if you're getting $1,000,000 plus? How does that work? You're getting over $135,000, $140,000 of extra money. So, it's not on us. We give them plenty of money, and there's plenty of money there. So, it's up to them to operate that budget. Nobody should be getting laid off. No building should be closed, and nobody should worry about any of the licenses.
So, what's the plan for 2020?
In 2020, if they need more money...
You've got no state funding. You're going to give them another $400,000 in December 2020, or July?
You don't know if you don't have state funding. That's up to the...
No. You've got $1,000, and we lose state funding the following year, in year two.
So, simple. 841, I'll give you. You give me state funding, give me $600.
They have an agenda item to fix the roof. They have fixing that building. I mean, now that they've killed the expansion plan, all right, now you want to cut their budget by 50% and let this department or entity die on the vine. This is criminal.
They get their 841 back. They get their state funding, we get 600 to fix the building. We have an RFP out there. When we get that back, we'll know exactly what it is to bring that building up.
The library budget, and the library entity is not like, again, it's not like a town department, it is not like an enterprise. It's a separate entity with their own financial autonomy, okay? If they have 600,000, we're planning on expanding to a new building.
Right. Tonight, we're going to talk about 2019. In 2020, we'll talk about...
I'd like to talk about the election in 2018 and 19. I mean, here all the promises were made. I'll support the library. I'll support the library. December, you're going to keep up with me and get that RFP out. January, let's get all the damn buildings. Well, I'm sorry, but I think it's yet another shallow promise. I don't believe you people.
Yeah. So, I just want to make a little bit of a, I guess, explain that reserve that the library has. It's not money that's just sitting there. They actually went over their budget last year. They've been paying the two employees to get their pensions because the last council took those pensions away. So, they're actually short of their budget last year. They went into that reserve, and they're projected to go about $77,000 into that reserve again this year. This year, so they do need that money, and when, you know, you take that away, they're going to be short again with no reserve. So, there's a reason for that, because they've decided that it's the right thing to do to continue to pay their employees their pension. So, it's not really a surplus. It's a reserve. It's going to be used exactly for what it's for. So, I just want to make sure that is clear, because that's the fact with that reserve. But another thing that I think we should kind of talk about here is what exactly is going on right now, and there's a word for this, and the word is extortion. So... Obtaining something that you won by force, or a threat, or other means is extortion. It's publicly happening. We hear it without any shame. He'll give you the money, he'll give the library the money if they do something that he wants, something that the library doesn't want to do, something that voters didn't approve, it's just something that these three people here want. A renovation to a current building that was not approved by anyone. So, right? So, that's what we're seeing here. There was a, I don't know if people saw it, but last week, there was a joint statement put out by the Narragansett Republicans. So, two parties that I think everyone can agree that those two parties basically disagree on everything. This is a nonpartisan issue. The library is a nonpartisan issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't agree anything, this guy. But there isn't a thickness of a piece of paper on the library question.
Exactly. So, this is really a nonpartisan issue. That statement was put out by the two parties, put in various publications. I think it was reported on TV as it was due, and there were some statements made in response to that resolution that was, I think, published in the Narragansett Times on Friday. It was Friday. So, Matt Mannix replied to that resolution, and I guess I just mentioned a couple of his, a couple of parts of that statement. So, he said, "It is interesting to be attacked by partisan hacks for a, in quotes, 'vicious and spiteful abuse of power,'" said Mannix. "It is their obsession with power that is the problem." He also said, "What they have is a political agenda," he said of Ames and Riley. "They have stirred up an angry and uninformed mob since November to pursue their goal. I represent the silent majority, whose members do not come to hiss and boo at council..."
Or laugh loudly. Or laugh loudly.
"I am the last bulwark in a traditional low-tax town against excessive borrowing and spending. I will continue to represent the Narragansett taxpayers of the town council and not give in to these conjoined political hacks." So, in my opinion, a good way to represent the taxpayers would be to do what they voted for and what they asked for. So, again, I just really want to stress that. What we're seeing in the budget is not really, has anything to do with the operational budget of the library. It's about extortion and vengeance, and we're all seeing it in plain sight, and unfortunately, at this moment, there's nothing that we can do here at the council, but there are things that you all can do, and I guess this is, I'm not sure if this is the silent majority, but if it is, you're going to have time to speak tonight, so please do that. So, thank you.
So, just to clarify, the last council, which I was part of, did not cut pensions of those two employees. They were never granted because they're not town employees. They're different from what you just said, Jesse. They're not town... Hey, I'll listen to you. They're not town employees. Our last preseason was qualified for that, so that's number one. Number two, as far as the number is 67%, the way it was written was either renovate or bill. Many people have said renovate. I voted for this. I continue to tell everyone, I voted for this bill for the bond, but to renovate. As far as the nonpartisan town council, I don't care what the GOP or Democratic town committee have to say. We're nonpartisan. We're here to do what is best for the town. I don't care less what anybody's political aspirations are outside of this town. We're here to do what's best for the town, period.
So, a couple of mistakes. Yeah, a couple of mistakes. So, the wording on the bond was to acquire new real estate. It was not to renovate the current building. You know that. That's like the fifth time you've said...
It was locations, Pacific, the Belmont.
It was acquire and renovate.
So, you can renovate the current building?
You voted for the library in the hand, Mannix, in September 15th.
I never voted for the library in the year. I always, acquire and renovate was the plan.
And second, the town council did vote last term to take those two pensions away. I was at multiple meetings. That's what happened.
We never, no. Lori Kelly hired people telling them they had pensions. They came to us, and we said, "You're not town employees. You don't have pensions." This came to head when these employees went, the town library employees, went to the HR and wanted their pensions. It came to a head, we were told that they were there, and it was explored by our Lynn, our councilor. They're not town employees, period. They don't earn pensions. Our town employees earn town pensions. They don't earn pensions, our town employees earn town pensions, that's it. You can smirk at me as much as you want, Mr. Pugh, that's it, that's the truth.
Alright, so did you vote, was there a vote to take on that motion?
You know what, we've had so many motions, I don't know.
There was, there was.
And I probably voted no, because they're not town employees, according to two of our councils who are here tonight. Are they town employees, are our library employees town employees, deserving town pensions?
Well, they seem to be a town apartment when you wanna cut them.
Six hundred eighty-six thousand dollars is sitting in a surplus. If we had other departments with that, we would be in much dire financial straits. When the police, when the police, or the fire, or DPW is under budget, the money goes back into the...
It's a separate...
Mr. Davis, can you please answer our question?
If we're gonna interrupt each other, right, so we'll, Mark Davis answer the question, and then we're going to get back to the budgetary question.
So as I previously find, it was my opinion, as well as the two previous solicitors, that the library employees are not town employees.
Thank you. So I would also...
Lori, you're not recognized, Lori, you're not recognized.
But I was voted improperly by one of the...
Sean, help me out here, she's not recognized. With the conference session, we're...
Alright. So I don't know if Chris will know this, Chris, if you don't, you don't have to come up if you don't know it. But does the town, does the town report the library pensions in their financial statements?
Yeah.
Okay, they do, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so the town does report those pensions from the library in their financial statements that they file, right? So, okay, got it.
Pensions which predate, obviously, is half the person, you're right. Alright, all in favor?
Oh, whoa, whoa.
The public hearing is closed on the budget. This is the first reading of the budget ordinance, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Greg, you're gonna let it happen?
All opposed.
Greg, you're kidding me, I know kidding me?
All opposed.
You're gonna lose a hundred, you lost two hundred thousand, thanks for that, and in twenty twenty, we're gonna be at zero?
Do you have a vote, I'm calling the vote, is there a vote on the budget?
I'm just, alright, so...
It's a vote on the budget, it's not a speech, we've heard the speech.
I can't answer your question.
Are you a yes or no on the budget?
Is this an item on the agenda?
It's an item on the agenda.
Alright, so we're not taking public comment, like every other item on the agenda?
It's a first reading of the budget ordinance, closed the public hearing two weeks ago.
But it's still an item on the agenda.
Right, but it's a first reading, so we close the public hearing.
With the first reading except the discretion, it would be at the discretion of the president.
Alright, all opposed?
No.
Nope.
Motion approved three to two, item number eleven. The difference is, we, so we're gonna be monitoring it from the... A motion to adopt a resolution approving the capital improvement plan. Is there a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed, motion approved five to zero. A motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations for the town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances with regard to Conant Avenue and Pilgrim Avenue. Discussion, this is a first reading of a resolution that came out of a work session we had last week. And we came to a consensus of a work session, I mean, any comments on the council?
Yes, so Matt, after the work session, I was contacted by a gentleman who's at the podium here, who is a resident of Pilgrim Avenue, who would like to be able to present to the town, he's already spoken with Sean and Mike Delugey, who's also involved in this, to potentially have a solution that would include his own property, that would include him actually paying for a wetland study to be done on his own property, to potentially allow for vehicles to be parked at his property, for the surface to be able to use. So I'd like to ask Matt, if you can speak.
Yes, sir, please state your name and address.
Good evening, council members, my name is Bill Shirell. I live on ninety-one Kalath Avenue, and I also own a property in fifty-one Pilgrim Avenue. So the two that are the most eastern, southeastern properties on Kalath and Pilgrim. I've lived in Pilgrim Avenue for ten and a half years. I've never called the police on the surface, no tickets were issued because of it. I've owned fifty-one Pilgrim for seven years, I've never called the police, and no tickets were issued, right? So, one of the key purchase criterias I made when I purchased these homes was there was a ordinance not to park. And that has been in place since nineteen seventy-six. And to put that in perspective, I was twelve years old when that ordinance went into place, okay? I'm not a surfer, you can tell by my physique, but I am a fisherman, and I do enjoy, and I do think everyone has a right to have access to the water. So I've habited with everybody for a long period of time. On April first, and at the workshop, the residents became billified. Well, I'm here to say that the business board is two sides, and I want to, you know, I want to kind of offer you guys a solution, and that would involve using my property, okay? So I think we can get six or seven spots. Now, a wrinkle came up today that there may be wetlands there. So I talked to the chief, and I said, "I'd offer to pay for that study personally, okay, to see if we can arrange something here." Even if folks could park partially on the pavement and partially on the grass, fine. You know, maybe we can put some crushed stone down there, whatever, everybody can be, you know, can utilize that. But this is in lieu of the three spots that are being proposed on the south side of Pilgrim, that's adjacent to the water. I own that property, the parking spots would literally be twenty feet from my daughter's bedroom. There's, you know, I don't wanna get into it, I'm gonna try to take the highway this morning, but there's been, you know, for no tickets, there's been a ton of disrespect to private property that continues even since the meeting of, you know, speeding, changing, you know, dogs being put in cars, they bark, I happen to work out of my home, my son works out of the home, you know. It's just, I think we need to be fair, and we need to have a three-sixty discussion to come up with a fair decision. But I am opposed to that, okay? Access to the ocean is a right, but parking is a privilege. So, you know, let me see what else here. You know, I don't know if you guys drove down Conant lately, but there's ruts in that road, along the south side of that road. People park, they're parking there, they destroy people's property. I had the same situation in my house at fifty-one Pilgrim, and I have to put stakes up to prevent people from parking on the... I mean, you know, ninety percent of the community, the surfing community are wonderful, I have a great relationship, I know my name, we're joking. But I do want the respect, and I do wanna offer a solution that's fair to the folks, so they can have the access. But I do not want to continue those two, you know, those three spots, which I think realistically will be two spots. And I talked to a gentleman today, and I think we can, you know, we wanna propose maybe a workshop, another workshop, a more civil workshop, to have a conversation about how to proceed. So again, I'm standing in the olive branch, in the interest of our group, I'll pay for this, excuse me. And, you know, I look forward to a resolution, guys, and if, you know, we can move to, you know, it's up to you guys, but if we can move to continuance after this workshop is performed, I personally think that we're gonna get a lot of this. Thank you, thank you very much.
I want to pay for wetland study.
To do wetland study, basically what they have to do is get a survey, and then hire a wetland biologist to go out and put the stakes in the ground. To do that, they have to dig holes, they have to do a little bit of scientific on the ground study, look at water tables, look at the soil qualities, look at the plants growing there, and then add that information to the site survey. The property has been surveyed before, it actually came in about five years ago for zoning relief. So I'm not sure if Mr. Shirell had paid for that survey or not, but the site hasn't been surveyed, that could speed it up a little bit. But this is, you know, it's a couple of months, I mean, it's not, it takes time to hire the right person, get the person out there, get the study done, and then get it over on paper, it's not real sure.
Okay, so he's nodding to me that he didn't pay for the survey, so knowing the...
When I built the home, I did, yeah.
Okay.
Would it come down to a month?
Well, I can just cut it down, because he's got the data already, you can go back to his original surveyor and have that wetland information updated, so that obviously it'll be up to him, if his surveyor has time, I can't speak for them.
I'll fuck him up. Mike, where's the subject block?
Oh, okay, sorry. I should have my point, but I mean, I don't. It's up on the right-hand side, where you see the intersection, and it's the cause of the pool, upper right.
I'm proposing the block. Oh, and me in there?
That's the one, yeah.
So this is an alternative to the work session? What are people's thoughts on the council?
I would agree with continuing. I don't think that we really took enough opinion into account after that first, last work session, so I think definitely get something, like date, a commitment to it tonight, so that we do it, maybe in July, whatever works, and do another work session, and figure something out that works for everyone, because it does seem like there's a lot of things in common between the two sides, and they're not really the two sides, just between the two, we could do something better than what's been proposed.
So does someone wanna make a motion to continue with that?
Well, can we get this done, amend this? Do you have an hour to get this done, and then we'll continue on the Pilgrim side?
Well, he's saying in lieu of the three spots that would be right in front of his house, he's willing to look at six or more behind his house.
Correct.
So that's in lieu of. Correct.
We have two spots, or three spots down in Conant today, approved. And then continue it to work with this gentleman to add additional parking.
Well, who knows, maybe somebody else will come forward that has the same type of situation.
Or then we can always continue again.
So you'd like to do three of the same?
Yeah, let's do three of the same, since we get the ball rolling in the right direction, and then we'll work with this gentleman to add additional parking.
You'll probably wanna put that as a reading for the next, because that's not how it's written right now.
Like amend it?
We could, we could.
Like amend this?
Alright, so, yes, so come forward, sir. Please go forward.
My name is Ray Farnin, one ninety-nine North Road, Hopkins, Rhode Island. And unlike the speaker, two speakers ago, I am a surfer. I have been surfing at Conant and Pilgrim Avenue, what we call the Alpines, for about twenty-four years, since I was fifty years old. I'm concerned that the two principal areas of parking, for those of us who love Narragansett, and, but traveled a little bit to get here, will be eliminated. I'm particularly confused by, first of all, may I ask a question of the chair? Is this a year-round proposed ordinance or a seasonal?
Right now it's moving to year-round.
It is seasonal, it is year-round.
Right now, the board is, I don't, the board that's in front of us is to have six parking spots. That's what's in front of us, right now there's no parking on those spots.
Thank you for that clarification. At the end of Conant Avenue, there's a public access point, and that public access point will accommodate approximately four cars. And this, as written, would eliminate two of the four cars parking at a public access point, because on the north side of that little point there, there would be no cars permitted. It's referred to in the, that's the northeast corner of that. I find that while two more cars won't address the root issue, it speaks to the spirit of this, because we have, we, that's... If I understand public access, that includes the town of Conant, as well as Narragansett, and so I was concerned about that. And really, I'm a little nervous, I've not spoken enough. I'm concerned that, I would ask you to consider, reconsider eliminating all parking year-round. Because I'm in the community of older folks that are year-round surfers. Six months a year, there are no difficulties with parking in that area. And I don't like a seasonal issue, but to make it year-round, it makes no sense. To eliminate two parking spaces of four in a public access area makes no sense. And I just, I just ask you as a grand product who loves to surf, and as a member, a small member of the local large surfing community, that you reconsider this. And I just wanted to look at you in your eye and just say, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Laura, my name is Natalie Sorekstein, I am a taxpayer in Narragansett, I work in Narragansett. And, Phil, I wanted to thank you for your kind gesture. I did want to just make a comment about the work session. I did not find... I did not find that the residents were billified, I felt that there was a lot of spirit towards working towards a positive resolution, and I felt that the residents and the surfers, for the most part, were respectful of one another and listened to one another. I'm gonna read this brief statement. "I am here representing the surfing community and a group of individuals working together under the name of right coastal access. Before I address the town on motion to table the proposal or to accept part of the proposal in regards to the parking, I think it's important and relevant to note the following. Contrary to what has been previously stated by several individuals at other meetings, the right-of-ways at Conant, Louise, and Pilgrim Avenue were not created for the sole use of the residents in the neighborhood as needed access, but were established as right-of-ways to be used by all the public. Kevin Cude at CRMC states this, "CRMC cannot designate a right-of-way whose use is legally limited to a select group of individuals. An example is a case of a coastal plant such as Pataquamscah Lake shores and Metatuxa that includes both waterfront and inland lots, where easements associated with waterfront lots are created to allow inland property owners, but not the general public, legal access to the shore. In no case would CRMC designate a right-of-way that limits public access in this manner. Likewise, CRMC guidelines clearly state that the CRMC does not create new public right-of-ways, they must already exist. The CRMC merely recognizes and places an official designation on previously existing conditions, and all of those are CRMC-designated right-of-ways. There are six legal ways to create a, six legal ways to create and establish a public right-of-way in the state of Rhode Island. One of them is by implied dedication by a property owner. We have legal documentation to indicate that both Conant Ave, Pilgrim, and Louise right-of-ways were established in this manner. For the purpose of putting to bed this idea that these right-of-ways were created for the neighborhood use only, I would like Attorney Keith Kyle to present and submit for exhibit to the town council and the public supporting documents to this point. We support tabling the vote this evening on the proposal put forth by the town council on the work session of May thirteenth to a later date for two reasons. on the work session of May 13th to a later date for two reasons. One is, we do not support the proposal in its entirety. Although we appreciate the small gesture of three parking spots to be opened on each of the right-of-way, we do not agree with or appreciate the addition of wording into the resolution that would further restrict parking at these right-of-ways. In no way was this ever discussed in the work session on this issue, and we do not approve. It is our belief that further attention needs to be given to this situation, and we are working together to put together a proposal as a community, and we're requesting either an additional work session or appropriate methods in which we can present our ideas and plans to the council."
Thank you.
I will finish with this very briefly. The comprehensive plan in 2016, item number three, it's titled "Balanced Protection of Natural Resources with Economic Growth." It reads, "Narragansett is a coastal community where its natural resources greatly contribute to residents' quality of life, but also support and bolster the local economy, including tourism and fishing industry. As economic development opportunities grow," which includes building homes in residential neighborhoods, "it's important that, as economic developments grow, it's important that natural resources should be, should not be compromised. Careful management of the coastlines, ponds, rivers, trails, forested areas, well-maintained..."
Thank you, you've gone over the, yeah, we know the sentiment of that.
It includes public access to these resources to be enjoyed and appreciated. I vote to, or I motion to have this postponed to a later date. Thank you.
Each come out, but then we're going to have the council discuss it, because if we're going to continue it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have everyone celebrate.
I'm going to be very brief. First of all, town council, my name is Tina Salajo, I spoke last week at Tina's Avenue. First of all, I want to thank the council for removing the four parking spaces at the end of Louise Avenue in Caleb, so I appreciate that after being heard. So that was appreciated by our community. I must say that I thank the last woman who just spoke, but I'm a little confused as to her saying that we think that we have those right-of-ways to ourselves, because I think I can speak for the rest of the residents, and it was said last week that we have lived in the community and have coexisted with the surfers. Again, we have never written tickets to those people, and this can of worms has been opened by individuals, a few individuals who've received tickets. So we would not be here right now if other people didn't bring in their tickets, they got angry because they got tickets. I just want to say that, I want to reiterate that, that the taxpayers, we're taxpayer residents, are not here to deter the surfers. We are happy to see them, we have accepted them in our neighborhood. They are angry because a few people got a ticket. I'm also going to mention, and no one mentioned last week, and I wanted to mention it last, no one mentioned the Rose Newman Park, two streets over. It is a private place that is open to the public, with an enormous amount of parking, including, including, most importantly, a safe, public, walkable access way to the shoreline. So I don't know if you're aware of that. There's a big sign that allows people to walk along the shore, right to the shore, without climbing down rocks, which that's what they do in the neighborhood where Caleb, Pilgrim, and Caleb is. So it's more dangerous to be walking where we live, okay? So that is a safe access point with plenty, plenty of parking that could actually rectify all of this, and it's not far. If they want to surf down to us, it's not far. There's plenty of parking there. I do oppose any gravel parking that was mentioned last week on Louise due to the extreme wind, and again, who would upkeep that gravel with weeds, et cetera? Because that would be, you know, difficult to have parking with gravel. Again, someone brought the law, they are angry because they received a ticket, they're upset, and then they have upset something, our neighborhood, their neighborhood too, that is quiet, beautiful, and peaceful. They have upset that peace, we didn't upset that, we have welcomed that, despite them breaking the parking signs, parking sign laws since 1976. The residents have every right to be concerned about the peace that has been infringed upon us. And again, keep that in mind, the Rose Newman Park. Thank you.
Mr. Kyle.
Keith Kyle, 65, I guess, street arraignment, so I'm here, I guess, with three hats today, the taxpayer, and somebody who's been surfing his whole life, and a lawyer. My only real purpose for being here today is to, I'd like to offer, for purposes of the record, four documents which unequivocally establish Conant, Pilgrim, and the grass, 50-foot grass strip as CRMC-designated rights-of-way. And as Natalie's pointed out, the fourth exhibit, I have the letter from Mr. Kute along with some documents that he asked us to submit here today, so-
I know it's not a public hearing, but-
I understand, I mean, because it sounds like-
They're not taking exhibits in person.
I still would like them to be part of the record.
But you could give them to, that would be good.
The only other comment I would like to make in response to Mr. Murray is that I think if the council is inclined to table this motion for another date so that more input can be that, rather than take a piecemeal approach and a few spots here or there, I think, especially given Bill's suggestion, pardon, I mean, my first name, that maybe it would be you and everyone to just sort of have another crack at workshop or submitting documents, however you see.
So it'd be kind of a motion, we'd probably be looking for a motion to continue it, but with a, we want to see between now and then what the proposal would be for this survey slash ordinance, because that would, the proposal's going to need to be part of the conversation. Because otherwise, we're just going to have the same, we're done that one session, right? So I think when the town manager, something's the effect of, if the town manager can report to us and say, "This is ready to go, we now have the survey and/or, you know, ordinance plan," then that would be part of, because that would change the conversation regarding what we talked about in the work session. Otherwise, I feel like we would just be repeating ourselves. But if a council member wants to make, it's just a motion to continue, knowing that we were saying that there's going to be meetings between the town manager and the first speaker.
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. This wasn't, put these three spaces in, that's it, man. As far as I'm concerned, these right-of-ways, each one of those streets are 50 feet wide, plenty wide, if you bring gravel to the roads, right-of-ways are down on each side. You can plenty wide to park on both sides, okay? So they definitely give you something done, and I want to see a lot of what I'm down at than, you know, just three spots, okay? If you want to continue it without the spots, that's fine with me. But I was thinking that at least you got three spots where you won't get tickets, so we wait, what, two months for a survey?
Solnik, the motion to continue it until time we hear the town manager receive the plans for the ordinance.
And there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. The next item, item 13, a motion to authorize the use of the miscellaneous repair and construction services contract with George Sherman Sand and Gravely Incorporated to complete drainage pipe extension on Elizabeth Road in the amount of 10,000. Okay, we're going to just give it a second for discussion. Any discussion from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Who's going to run? I'm going to ask the town sergeant to shut the doors now, just temporarily. David? David, thanks. People in the back, there's next to them, open up. Alright, any discussion on this, this item is from council branch?
Yeah, this was actually money taken from the library transfer, so just want to make sure we're aware of that, so I'll be voting no on this for that reason specifically.
Any other discussion?
Where are these caught?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Staying?
Motion approved three to one. Item number 15 is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading in ordinance and amendment of chapter 78, utilities, article three sewers, section 78-247 definitions, and section 78-284 annual permit fees, permit application fees, annual monitoring fees for commercial industrial users.
移到
This is new, and we, so people have questions for the engineering department, I mean, council members have questions for engineering department?
What are the fees?
Can I call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number 16 is a motion to adopt a resolution establishing a proposed wages for seasonal, part-time, and temporary employees for fiscal year 2019-20. Discussion, this is, these increases are because of the increase in the minimum wage, so that's why we could do a new charter, see that? Are there any comments from the council? For the public? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 17 is a motion to read, pass, and accept as a first reading in ordinance and amendment of chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning, specifically in the new subsection, section 4.8.4, Boone Street Special District as introduced on March 18th, 2019.
I'll move that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion, so this is, again, this public hearing is closed, we've discussed this many times, I'm just going to go down the council line and see what, if people want to play in on it, and then we're going to vote. Pretty intimate with this, we've continued it several times, so any comments from the council?
Sure, I'll start. So I have spoken to multiple people, people like two or three people in the area that are opposed to this. I've also spoken to, I'd say, more people that live there that are fine with it. I do, I have seen the water issue in person, that's a legitimate issue, it's very bad, needs to be fixed, however, based on my discussions with Mike DeLuca, with Sean, Acting Manager Corrigan, the water issue is not, it's really a separate issue from this rezoning. It's clearly coming from the spring, and it's clearly a drain, an issue with the drainage pipe. So I have no reason to vote against it, this motion for that reason. The water issue has to be dealt with, but again, it's separate from, and there's really no proof in any way that it is related, so that's why I'll be voting for this.
Mr. Lima?
So again, this water issue, didn't happen, I mean, I'll fall back, Mr. DeLuca, there's this water issue, 20 years, goes back quite a ways. Any new buildings that are built in the area, again, who's not disturbed in the ground, may have water issues. And this water may come to the worst points, because that's how water flows. So if they approve this, and then, what, 20 more years, we keep dealing with this issue? I want to see the water issue, everybody sit down, once and for all, figure it out, do what we have to do, if these people square it up, they paying taxes like everybody else, sure we can come to a decision and move forward with this rapidly, if it has big concerns about developing Boone Street, if you move Boone Street in front of it, then again, I don't know how long the water issue is going to take to happen, so.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Vickers hasn't been here for 20 years, okay? He's doing a hell of a job down there in Boone Street. He's literally spending hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars down there. I mean, cobblestone sidewalks, we don't even, he has to control, if he does something new, he has to control the water from his property, so it doesn't go on someone else's property. This is a civil matter between Durkin and Lorenzo over there on Continental Court, they're two separate issues, not connected. But because of a personal civil action on another street, we're going to hold this gentleman up. And I just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I'm working on something with Durkin, I think we can work something out, but to hold this gentleman up, you know, he's doing a great job, he did the house over there on Rodman, and he did another one, Kingston Road, he's increasing our revenue, you guys are so touchy about revenue. We've got a guy that's bringing revenue, now, you're going to shut him down? Maybe if you let this guy build, we can have a library.
So Matt? So as far as Boone Street goes, I mean, we have many people come up and talk about it, I agree with Rick, there are some issues here to resolve, I hear what you're saying, Patrick, that it's a civil issue, we've heard that, however, I believe it's also a town issue, we're a small town, we don't need to have anything go to lawyers, what I would like to see, see later on in our agenda, that we have, we'll be looking for a new town manager, we have a fantastic police chief who wants to go back to be the police chief, so we'll be looking for a new town manager, what better a project to get a new town manager than to take a look at Boone Street and help us figure out neighbor to neighbor, business owner to business owner. Patrick, I believe you 100%, I think that Mr. Vickers is doing a great job, he's invested a lot of money in it, however, I really think that we need to have someone sit down with all parties and really take a look at the project, and make sure that we're moving forward in all the best directions. I want to move forward with this, but there's no rush, Rick mentioned he's doing it for 20 years, Mr. DeLuca says, you know, so it's probably like around the same time, so another month before, two, before we hire a town manager who can really guide us through the process. Boone Street is a very important part of the town, it should be our town center, and just to rush forward without waiting for that town manager to guide us, I mean, is not a good idea.
Guide us? Guide us on what?
Guide us, Patrick.
Alright, all in favor?
I don't even want to oppose.
Aye.
Staying?
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails one to three. Item number 18, a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading in ordinance and amendment of chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning, specifically text provisions to section 6.4, dimensional regulations, and as pertains to the height of accessory structures.
移到
Discussion, this is second reading, so if there's no new information, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. 19, a motion to schedule a work session with town staff regarding the process and procedure of hiring the town manager for the Town of Narragansett.
移到
Discussion, so, Chief Corrigan indicated to me that he was not going to be seeking a full-time position, so before, first I wanted to thank him for the time that he's put in in the last few months, and the job that he's done for. And so before we schedule it, I do want to give the chief an opportunity, I want to thank him for that, he's been excellent police chief, and I know he wants to address the town tonight, so go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and this is more about my, my overall police work, and 22 years career, 22 years, I'm here with 23 years now, Narragansett Police. I would like to get back to, continue my education. I appreciate your help and your support, and the senior manager, you've been fantastic, solicitor, and I appreciate all your support.
And the town as well?
Thank you.
And I don't blame you for going back to that nice age job of chief of police up there, nice and quiet over there.
So again, thank you, thank you to the chief. So this work session- So this work session, so when we met through this before, um, we, um, are gonna meet with town staff. Um, one of the staff members that we're gonna be meeting with has children, so I'm hoping that we can do this during the day to accommodate her. Those dates that, that we look forward with Thursday, May twenty-third, so council members, uh, this would be a meeting with Sean and his staff, and the HR director. What's Edo's availability on Thursday, May twenty-third, is that a date people could?
What time are you looking?
I don't have a time right now, they said the day was open, so.
I'm not available on Tuesday.
Available, okay. So, um, so then, um, is there another date, um, G for Terry, that, um, we could look at?
I'm open on the twenty-fourth.
Would be, or the others as well? Alright, how is the twenty-fourth for people tentative?
So what we're experiencing is that?
No, we, we're hoping to do during the day, if people can do that. This is just to kick off the process, because it's, one of the staff members has children, so to keep her here, um, but, but we can do it another time as well, I mean, we can do a tentative date and then change the scheduling.
Twenty-fourth works.
Doesn't look for you?
Twenty-four.
Alright, so, um, what would be a time, let's do it, um, probably, probably like three o'clock, could we do? Alright, and this, this is tentative, because we're gonna have to check a couple schedules. So, this is a motion to schedule, so we're gonna schedule this work session for Friday, May twenty-fourth, at three P M. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. Item twenty is a motion to advertise market and provide a public process for the sale of Belmont I G building and premises, in effort to obtain the highest and best offer for Narragansett taxpayers.
Okay, I put this one on.
Alright, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second. I put this one on. But I'm afraid I'm gonna wake up one day, now Belmont building is gonna be sold. I'm the last one to know anything around here. So, it may seem inconsistent. We might wish that the library moved to the Belmont building space and expand their facility. But again, I'm afraid that we need to drag this process into the daylight so we know exactly precisely what's going on with that building at all times.
So the votes are all opposed, um, so, um, any other comments?
Sure, yeah, so, that's really the intent, it's not, the intent is not to get this building sold. The intent is to, um, add transparency to the process, because that's something that's lacking here. The vote was in January, where, um, the majority of the council voted to sell the building. And, things have been happening related to that, except nobody's heard. So, if this is gonna be, if the intent is to sell it, it should be properly listed and advertised, and the process should be transparent, so that's, that's the intent here, um.
Alright, any other comments? So wait, just, you, but you, you don't want to sell the building?
No, we want this process to be approved.
So you voted publicly to not sell the building? But yeah, you want to have a process in which we put it out.
I don't want, I don't want.
We don't want you to hide behind the shadows, Chris.
I don't want to wake up.
Well, you know we're trying to fix something with one of the tenants, right? So we're trying to, before we go out to the work ethic. But I, I wasn't saying that, I think everybody hears.
So we're all pretty in the fact that we have an executive session tonight, which is the continuation of the executive session from May twelfth to talk about this subject. So, I'm not quite sure why this is on, whether you want to try to hash it out and start talking about executive session matters, which we shouldn't be doing, but this motion is, is, is not appropriate at this point in time. We'll be talking about the Belmont building executive session later tonight. So I vote Matt, and you take a vote right now.
No.
No, wait a minute, I, I got something to say. I, I'm, I still commercial property, residential property. And, for not to advertise, not to market this building properly for the taxpayer, again, is a disservice, okay? You know, as a real estate professional, anytime I take any property, I jump off the roof and I scream to the world that this property is available. Jill, I just need you to understand this, alright? We're not secret agents here, okay? And we're not a secret agent, we should advertise it and let people know in Connecticut and, and around the world, that this Belmont space is available.
Patrick, we've, we've been talking executive session, and it's not appropriate to have those.
No, it is appropriate, it, this is a separate issue. If it's not on an executive session, it's not a, it's not a closed tip, okay? It's advertised or not advertised.
It's, it's been four months since you voted to sell it, so what are we doing?
You don't want to sell it, you gotta change your mind?
Well, it's confusing, right? It's confusing if you don't want to sell, you made it clear that you want me gone in November of twenty twenty so that you can get it done, so that's your position, so this is very, it's just confusing.
It's really not.
It's very confusing.
No, the confusion is why, if you voted to sell it and then not list it, and then not, why are you not, why is it not listed?
You know the reason.
Why is it not listed?
You, you know that we're working on this with one of the.
Tell us, tell everybody why it's not.
I just said it.
What, we're working things out with the. No, it's not.
Yes, well, okay.
It's just a little, it's a little bit suspicious, that's all.
It's not, there's nothing suspicious.
We're gonna try to get you out of here a little soon, okay?
Alright, is there any other comments from the council?
I want to hear from, from, uh.
Anyone from the public? Alright, all in favor?
Mark? You've been involved in real estate transactions. Do you think it's proven that we should be advertising and marketing this building property and a commercial venue to get the top dollar in this property? Especially after we did zoning change with add addition eleven?
It's a policy question for the council, Patrick, alright, Mr. Haynes?
It's a legal question for an attorney!
Mr. Haynes?
Mark, can you answer that question, please?
I've been extorted for issuing my comments on public policy, so that is definitely not a legal question. And, uh, Mr. Haynes?
Sorry I wasn't here earlier when you guys were talking, the other issues, I thought I was here. I do want to make some corrections to a few things. First of all, Jesse, I think you were saying this was a non-artisan issue. It's not a non-artisan issue, it's a bipartisan issue. Really is, uh, I see my name is being mentioned in the paper about me being, uh, losing the last election, how we should not have any voice in anything in the world. Maybe I didn't work as hard as in the last election, that's so viewed. I have five grandkids, I go to their soccer games on Saturday, I go to their soccer games on Sunday, and I'm not gonna miss any time with my grandsons or granddaughters to go out walking. I represent the people that, I mean, the people, I try to represent, the people who live in town. Okay, hopefully they know me, hopefully they'll meet, uh, get to know me over the next few years. Because I am running again, okay? And I will win next time. And if you try to sell this building, if you try to sell this building, I will lead a charge to take it back by eminent domain. And you make sure to be one of your buyers knows that, okay? I like to be honest with everything that I say to people. I would rather lose an election being honest all the time than go out and have mental bodies to get elected.
Hi, Lori Kelly of Wildfield Farm. Um, Matt, this is the first time I've heard there's been any discussion with the current tenant about doing anything with the building, could you care to elaborate? Because you brought it up.
It's an executive session, that's the whole point.
Well, you brought it up, though, we didn't know anything about executive session. But it would seem, because I know that you have received emails from other people who are interested in buying the property, that it should be shown to everyone that has expressed an interest. Could you, you know, speak about why the council doesn't want to show the building to other people?
So you criticized me for sharing something from executive session, and then now you want me to tell more about it?
It's not executive session, it's not executive session. We sent emails, and I know emails were sent to you, that asked for details on bidding on the property.
So you would like the process and advertising and marketing process?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Nancy.
Nancy, Joey, we had enough drive. I was wondering if you could tell me how much it's costing the town, um, to have that, to hold that building?
Ninety-eight hundred one.
What was it, eighty?
Ninety-eight hundred one.
Ninety-eight hundred one, thank you.
That is not, no, that's not correct, we're getting, we're getting revenue from, we're getting revenue from the building, from the tenant. So you can throw out all the numbers you want, and tell lies, and, um, social media.
So, good evening, Council President, let me elucidate you as to the intent of the motion. The intent of the motion is not confusing to the vast majority of people here in the room tonight. The intent of the motion is, all of us recognize what a backroom deal is. And this is a backroom deal. That's why your colleagues felt incumbent upon them to put this motion off. Not because they want to sell the building, but they recognize that you're doing this as a backroom deal. And that's wrong, and that's what Rhode Island is known for, and tragically, and sadly, and I actually really, from the bottom of my heart, never thought that you, Matt Mannix, would be capable of a backroom deal.
Go ahead.
What do you call it?
Real quick, if you're aware that it looks like a backroom deal, why not just make it open and transparent like they're asking, so that you can show up all of us?
If there are negotiations in process that all the council members are aware of, it's a little bit of a stunt to do this. It's a little bit of a stunt to go out there.
Name an actor, just name an actor.
My name's Paul, I'm a fellow seventh room server. It's a little bit of a, it's, it's a little bit of a stunt to do this. This is another way to churn up the outreach, which means, you guys know, if you've all, you're all privy to executive session, they have the ability, if there's a deal in flight, and it's a good deal, and they can close it, it doesn't have to go out there. It doesn't have to, if you get. Excuse me. Thank you for the booth.
I mean, again, here we are with the booth, right?
You know, we're not looking probably to make money on this, if we wash and get our money back. How many cents per thousand, Patrick, that's kind of your favorite thing, right? If we have a wash and someone comes and takes the building off of our hands, why not, so?
I'm afraid. There's a real fear to me, that these folks will take the first deal that comes along and give away the store without transparency. What do mine are?
Is there anyone else? Alright, all in favor?
So, just so we give a reason why you don't listen.
All in favor, we, we, this is a full discussion, all in favor?
Rick, you, you ask a professional, everything we can do is, well, we should have a professional with this, we should have a professional with this. We need a professional now, or at least advertise it behind the car.
All in favor?
If this building sells, if, if we wake up next week and this building is sold, and this council just voted to not list it, I think everyone knows what happened.
All in favor?
Yep?
All opposed? No, motion fails two to three. Item number twenty-one, a motion to approve partial repairs.
Don't let me sell the building.
Of the memorial buildings in Memorial Library. A motion to approve partial repairs to approve the memorial buildings in Memorial Library to be completed by Adcor Restoration Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars.
Uh, so.
Discussion.
So we're waiting for RFPs to come back on the, on the library, correct?
Yeah, RFP, the RFP.
And once we do have that back, we need to bring those, those individuals, individual individuals back into the library so they can have access to the second floor, so they can add on to the RFP, correct? So why are we thinking about putting a roof on, like, I think this is premature, I think we just need to take this one, should we get the RFPs?
So I spoke with, um, a couple, just before that, so Sean and Patty are great today, want to speak to this at all? Do you review, if that's where you come, come to the, Patty, are you ready? Sorry, Jesse, just, this is the item most.
Yes, the library board voted to have the repairs done because it's leaking now, and we can't wait for RFPs and that kind of thing. We have some money to do it, and that's why we are asking for you to.
Okay, great, and then, and you spoke with the engineer as well?
Yes, I spoke to him when I turned in the proposal for Mary.
Okay, great, thank you. Just mentioned you that, that did speak to town engineering. Uh, working on those concrete, uh, still, you know, RFP work, um, really puts that complete, full job and speak for.
Might as well cover it up.
So this is coming from the reserve, um, which is, you know, this is for, for these reasons. We had a discussion during the budget workshop about that the library should be using their reserve to maintain the building. Those are words from Matt, Ricky, and Jill. It's what is leaking, uh, it makes sense for the library to spend money to fix the roof, so, uh, yeah, it's pretty, seems pretty cut and dry.
Not pretty cut and dry, because we might be actually going up another floor. So all the doors and stuff, so I'm gonna speak. So if we go up another floor, then we're gonna actually be doing, doing, paying an F word, so, sounds like Sean almost has my opinion, we're gonna need to get people back in, but I'm not just gonna tax per dollar without.
Disnewed, man.
I just want to clarify, they're just repairs to tech, to fix the holes that are leaking. It's not to replace the whole roof, it's to fix, repair, to hold us over for a couple of years.
So this would be to fix a current leak, I think we are, the library makes a leak in a building.
How long has it been leaking? How long has it been leaking?
About nine months, six to nine months. We got Adcor to give us an estimate in March, I asked them for it in January. So it does take a little time, so that's why an RFP going out, it's already been out for a while. I, I need the roof fixed.
But it's two RFPs though, right, I think your RFP was for repairs, the RFP was for repairs. We didn't send an RFP out for the roof repair. So we sent an RFP out for the existing site to be, to be built out, so that's what we're waiting for.
Excuse me?
I, I still, that's not gonna happen for two years. I need the roof fixed.
I do have a question about the funding source, because you, with the, the, the description doesn't have a funding source, actually. Whether, is it coming from the library fund, or is it coming from the general fund of the town, twenty-five thousand one hundred?
I believe it's from.
I have to think.
The, the way it works with the library and the school department is, we take it out of our reserve fund for any broken, you know, AC, the heating systems, the roof repairs, the new door, which was ADA compliant. That comes out of what we call the reserve fund, the same way the school handles it. We have never come before the council and asked you to take out your general fund to do any of this work for the library. Basically, we have the funds, we were told initially in this go-round that we didn't even have to turn it in to the council. But we believe in being transparent, we believe that the townspeople should see what's going on in any expenditure over my. Money been missing from the description was it's an emergency repair that started with certain wind-driven rainstorm. that started with certain wind-driven rainstorms over the last fall, winter.
Thank you. That's confirmed, it's from the library fund. What is that? It's better than it comes from the library fund. Thank you. Um, anyone else? Any other comments? Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion approved, free to sue. Anybody who's open, please conduct yourself in an orderly fashion. We are, and remember that we, the discussion is for three minutes per person. Thank you. Just name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Carolyn Dulley of 201, Colonel John Gardner Road. And I'd like to address your financial plan to support the library in the years going forward. It doesn't sound like a habit. The library board, on the other hand, has been saving money for years in anticipation of renovation or a new library. What you're going to do in one fell swoop is to wipe out those funds and cause the taxpayers to have to now come up with that extra money. Now, they've spent many, many years collecting funds for donations from people who specifically asked that it be earmarked for the new library. So you have no right to have that money. You have no right to take that. You're already taking away $200,000 almost from state funds that they're going to lose for at least one year. And maybe they aren't even going to get all of what they need for this year. So next year, you're going to have to come up with a million dollars or more. And who's going to pay that? The taxpayers. And you're asking them to double or triple their contribution to the library for funds that were already there. You have no right to do this. You have no right to decimate the library. What are your motives? Was your motive to begin with to decimate the library? To reduce its staff? To reduce its services for the thousands of people who use that library every year? I don't understand your logic. A financial planner would say you have no foresight. A financial planner would say you're not thinking ahead. You're thinking about this year. While most people, most of us, who are saving and save forward in our real estate, think ahead. And we save and we plan. That's not what you're doing.
Nancy, you knew Joey at Vanderbilt Drive. I heard earlier, we were talking about the fund balance for the library at about $680,000. And Rick had lots of plans of what they could actually do with that money. I'm wondering why you're not talking to the school department with a $4.3 million fund balance. You're taking $680,000 from, you'd like to take $680,000 from the library, but you're not going to talk to the school department. In fact, I think you added to the budget.
Carlin Town, Woodhill Road. Once again, overwhelming numbers from the community are here to support the library in all of its endeavors. From reinstating its full budget to allowing access to the Belmont Building so that all can get a clear evaluation of its potential and costs, to moving forward and giving this town the library it needs and deserves. And once again, I ask you, where is that silent minority that you always claim is the majority? And please don't repeat Ms. Lola's statement from the last town council meeting that they don't want to be chastised or made fun of. No group has been chastised or called unflattering names more than the library supporters. How about the time Mr. Mannix yelled, "Go back to your seat, Meg. Go back to your seat. I'm tired of your disruptiveness. Go back to your seat." Patrick and Jesse have been called one-issue candidates. How about all the times Mr. Mannix has referred to us as the angry mob? Even this past week, Mr. Mannix was quoted in The Times in the article about the bipartisan support for the library by both the Republican and Democratic parties with statements like, "It is interesting to be attacked by partisan hacks," or his statement that Lori Kelly and the library board have gone rogue. And no, Mr. Mannix, we are not pushing for a Taj Mahal. And I don't think anyone in town, especially Richard, he's not here today, would call the Belmont Building the Taj Mahal. In the same article, you called the library supporters an angry and uninformed mob. We are very much informed. Probably anyone in this room can give you a detailed history of the library project. The only thing we don't know is how much it would cost to renovate the Belmont Building because you won't give us access to it. And getting back to the library supporters, the local majority, I would like to applaud their courage for coming, getting up and speaking week after week and month after month, unlike the person who, under the cover of darkness at the last town council meeting, with enough insider information to know only to put this flyer on the cars parked on the street and not in the parking lot. You want name-calling? I call that person a coward for not getting up here and saying his or her piece in front of us all. And bravo to the library supporters who risked being ridiculed, standing up for the will of the people. And Ms. Lola, how many times do you have to be reminded that the bond says acquire and renovate? And is a conjunctive, is a connective conjunction, which means that both actions, acquire and renovate, must take place. You cannot acquire a building you already own. So the bond money cannot be used to renovate the existing site. Months ago, I asked for a legal opinion. Was or was not that bond location-specific? We still have not been given an answer to that question. And I think that's important.
Thank you.
Lily White, Silver, 5 Jubilee Ave. When I spoke last time, I was not nearly as mad or irritated as I am now. Three minutes is not nearly enough to express my anger and thanks to those who love our library. As we learn about democracy in school, we learn about what it means to be a good leader, to listen to the people. The library actually came up. Everyone at my school repeatedly tells our teachers, Jesse Pugh and Patrick Murray, show us what it means to be a leader. We've recognized this numerous times. Students look up to both of you. Listening does not mean interrupting or saying a short thank you when someone starts speaking. It means taking into consideration everyone's issues, even those you can't even imagine yourself being part of. Above you are the words, hope, justice, equality, truth, and liberty. I am hopeful that you can change, that I can, that we can change your minds. Justice, equality, truth, and liberty. All the library, our library is the core of town. The library is a place where I can learn how to change the world. Those words are not being followed. This is not just about the library. This is about seeing how the higher powers of our town truly are and honestly react. That building was supposed to be the future for us, but now it just sits there with no purpose. Why not make it into something extraordinary? Enough with the numbers. Give us real answers. As Margaret Mead told the world, committed citizens can change the world. That's us. You three can come at us all you want, but my generation and everyone here knows that knowledge is power, and we will not stand down.
My name is Leanne Kugan, 84 South Field Road. This is my second week attending town council to fight for something that shouldn't even have to be debated. The opportunity to attend a community library. As children and as adults, we're constantly told that knowledge and the will to learn is the key to achieving, to achieving success in every aspect of life. Having me learn about our passions in school tells us what we have to learn, and we don't even have an open library. Actually, it surprises me. That it's so clear that there are more people in favor of library than a shuffleboard court. And still, you continue to ignore us. As a town council, you are supposed to vote in the benefit of the town. Well, this is not just what the town wants, it's what it needs. As you can see, there is, there are more of us. Although the board, the board votes three to two, a more accurate ratio is a smaller number to the hundreds of passionate Narragansett residents who want their library, and we want our library now. Mary Luchin's Memorial Library, where his life in Narragansett. This is what I and others have been telling you over and over again. We have been confiding in you and explaining how the library, how important the library is to us. I have been told before that our generation is the generation that will save the world. Fix things, keep order. Follow by this statement. I have been told I'm too young to make adult decisions. Well, here I am, making my adult decision. Here we are, saving the town in Narragansett. Thank you.
Veronica Sabatina, 2 Lyndon Road. I'm very fortunate to have the opportunity to have my voice heard in front of our town council. I would like to take this opportunity to discuss the importance of our town library and its fundamental. To start, I'd like to point out that the library is a part of every town's community. There are actually 123,000 public libraries in the U.S. Dividing equally, this would be basically three and a half public libraries for the United States. Three, three, thirty-six thousand eleven towns and cities. If people didn't watch, didn't want or use libraries, there would not be three for every town in the U.S. Our library provides countless opportunities to the member of our community. Where are you going to go when there's a history test and you need to learn about Alexis, Tocqueville, and American democracy? Where are you going to go if you were bothered by all the plastic that you saw on your hike, and now you want to know how you can help? Where are you going to go if there, if you are really passionate about a topic and you just need to learn more about it? You're going to the library. You may say that you can go on the internet, but there's nothing more empowering than checking out a book about a topic you're passionate about. Libraries are empowering. Libraries are opportunities. Opportunities to learn. Opportunities to grow. Opportunities to develop character and interest. But libraries provide much more than just books. If you go to our library, they can help you with VHS to DVD conversion, computers, copying, and much more. More importantly, in my opinion, they provide events and workshops for people of all ages, enabling the library to become the heart of our town's community. When I was younger, every year, my family and I would go to the library around Easter to participate in their egg hunt. This past October, my friend and I volunteered at the costume parade, helping to pass out candy. These are all services, opportunities that our library provides to enrich our community. Now, our library is in danger. It's being threatened by budget cuts. Our town library receives $841,000 from our town and $181,000 from the state. This adds up to about $1,022,000 total. In just five days, the budget will be cut to a fraction of its previous size. Only $400,000 total. If the budget is slashed, all state contribution will be lost. Our community will also not be able to order books from other libraries, and our library cards will not work in other libraries around the state. This would be a great loss of opportunity, seeing as we would be limited to the resources at Mary Luchin's Memorial Library. Furthermore, out of proper budget, the library would not be able to meet the state-operating waivers. Most importantly, without an appropriate budget, our library would not be able to remain open. This would lead to a terrible loss in sense of community. Where would kindergartners go to get picture books? Where would middle and high schoolers go to get print sources? If there's no Halloween parade, where would parents take their kids to show off their costumes? In fact, our library offers something to everyone in our community. If you do not take the library's offers, that's your choice, but there's always someone who will take the opportunities that the library provides. And that person will learn and grow from the library and the community. If libraries did not provide a sense of community, of growth, of learning, of character, or of opportunity, then there would not be enough libraries in the U.S. to have three in every town. Libraries drive communities. Libraries are opportunities. Thank you.
I'm Laura Manton of 66 Tubalutra. I'm an eighth-year attending Narragansett pure middle school, and I'm really wanting to talk about our library, as many of my peers and friends around here would also like to discuss. Our community is built on education, and the library is very core of our education. Cutting out budget will cut out a part of both students and members of our community. After overhearing community members' numbers support the budget cut, and after hearing the reasons they had, I only came to the conclusion that these members of the community have no value for any of my peers' educations. They only wish for money and have no value for an education that our valued library provides. If you have any hope for future generations to develop here in our town of Narragansett, then you'd better have respect for our education. Our small town with big dreams relies on this building. Without it, you have destroyed our future. My future, my peers' futures. You are telling my brothers that their future for this town does not matter. And council, that is cruel. And when I say, listen, do not interrupt. Turn those voices out. Do not interrupt them, and do not even attempt to speak over them. This is our time. This is our time to speak for what is right. And this library is what is right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Sastek. I live on 202 Bellevue Court. I would like to give a statement expressing my opposition to the proposed cut to the library's budget. Cutting the library's budget by over 50% would be a major mistake. It would take away social and economical opportunities as well as jobs. As well as my job. I'm a proud employee of the Maury Luchens Memorial Library. This proposed cut to the library's budget will hurt our town. Libraries are landmarks in towns and cities across this nation. They represent democracy. What our nation's founders believed in. They believed in democracy. I wonder where that's gone in our town. Libraries are places of education that must be respected. Libraries represent equality for all. Equality for all. Renowned writer Doris Lessing once said, "With a library, you are free, not confined by temporary political climates." It is the most democratic of institutions because no one, no one can tell you what to read and when and how. I ask those on the town council to please, please reconsider your proposed cut and restore the library's full budget by 2020. I pray that all of us, I pray that all of us remember the democratic principles that our nation was founded upon. Those democratic principles apply to libraries as well. Thank you.
My name is Joe Mulligan, I'm at 59 Roosevelt. I'm not here to praise the library of that particular library. I haven't talked to Mr. Mannix, who keeps repeating as he did in the article last week in The Times. I represent the silent majority, silent and invisible, I guess. But in any case, prove it, prove it. Pick up on Mr. Murray's suggestion and have a vote, up or down, on the Belmont Library. You've got to say, oh, an election costs too much money. The inertia is costing us a daily charge, every single day. Prove it. So if the yays beat the nays, then you'll have to find another line of defense. If the nays beat the yays, as you claim the silent majority will, then this, when people in this mall up, will have to be quiet and accept a democratic process. But if you don't prove it, then there's a reason you won't have the election. We all know what the reason is. If everybody who's a silent majority supported you, how come you came in third? Jesse Q. was unknown, and he came in first showing that there was more enthusiasm for voting for a pig and a pope than there was for the city.
On these daybooks, your Facebook post trail, I may not have anything fair, but I do have to say that, only do I not praise the library, the library myself, I also part of the silent majority. And I've got to say, I love this library and everything else in this entire community. Because all it is is basically everything that's equal to everyone, including education and all that, knowledge. But I'm also going to mention that all the people that I know, all the people I support, and everything that I support, basically it's the heart of our town. So as I am right here representing to you, the town council, that I do have to thank Pat and Jesse, and I guess the rest of you too, I guess. And I just give you, I give you a lot of credit. You've got to be a strong person to stand up there, you've got to be a strong person to get into speech. So you basically have taken the heart of this town, and I love it.
Pat Sabatino to Linden Road. I did not plan to speak tonight, and I could speak about a lot of things on my mind. I know what I thought I voted for, and that was a library in the Belmont Building with the renovation. I know that, I think that the decisions of the council are making a mockery of our town, they're going to hurt our home values, they're going to ruin our tax base. I'm not going to talk about any of that right now. I particularly want to talk about funding the library, level funding the library with 841 plus the state money. We heard from four young ladies here tonight, all from Narragansett Pure School. These three right here all went to the state championship for the National History Day competition. These two right here are going on to nationals to compete for the national championship. There are a lot of reasons that happens. That happens because of the good school, that happens because of dedicated teachers, it happens because of the hard work of students. It also happens because of our library, not just the library, the building, and the books in the building. We are in a state system. That is my daughter. I know she got books from the other library. I know her library card works at other places because we used it for her success. And now you are really jeopardizing their lives, the ones after them, and their ability to be part of a state system and succeed academically. This is not even about money anymore. This is a serious issue about the young people in our town. There are other people who need the library, and I'm not going to give you every reason you've heard, but for one moment, let these three right here realize that being part of a state system led to their success. Don't pull us out.
Good evening. My name is Carol Thornton, Crossroads, Narragansett. After following all your town council meetings, this winter, I'm left with some wonders. I wonder why, Mr. Mannix, in 2015, in The Independent, you were quoted, and I will read the quote, "If we're not going to own the building and property, I have a problem with that long term. If we could buy it, both land and building, then I am more comfortable." But a, but a long, a multi-year relationship, I'm not comfortable with. And now, that what has become a reality is that we own the land, and we own the building, and we own the parking spaces, you now charge ahead to sell the very building that was purchased for the library. I wonder why, in my opinion, you balked in that faith. I wonder why you allowed an RFP on the current library building, but not on the Belmont Building, for cost comparison. As a taxpayer, I really wonder why on that one. I wonder why, with the expected overflow, with the controversy that's going on, and only 154 places in this room, and 41 in the next room, I wonder why you continue to refuse to move this meeting to the high school that has plenty of parking and plenty of seats. I wonder why, in the overflow room, there was no closed-circuit TV, so those taxpayers can see what is happening in this room. They deserve that, because they can't get here. And there's only 41 places in that room. There were better people out front than the 192 seats available in this building. I wonder why the fire, the police and fire department, when asked, excuse me, I'm phrasing that incorrectly, but you asked, and I got this sign right in front, so I won't forget, to be civil, and hopefully I am civil and respectful, I should always show that out in the parking lot, Joe. I wonder why only we have to be civil. However, the behavior and the uncivil behavior and discussions and yelling that comes from that council and you, Mr. Mannix, it's very sad. And I wonder why no one has corrected that. I wonder how much it is costing me as a taxpayer for sometimes three, sometimes seven officers, how much is that costing me every meeting for four, five, six, I don't know, how many hours if it went on to 11, like it did last month?
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
No, no, no. Excuse me, Mr. Mannix. Excuse me, Mr. Mannix. Excuse me, Mr. Mannix, I have to wrap up my thing. But I do wonder, I will continue, and if you shut me out, I'll have somebody read it for me. I wonder why the library budget is being held hostage for its surplus when departments are allowed larger surpluses than this, than this library. And in closing, I shadow this whole stuff. In closing, and I know you're disgusted with me, Mr. Mannix, but I'm sorry, I have a library, I am a taxpayer. In closing, I am left wondering what has happened to democracy in the town of Narragansett, and why three councilors have chosen the library to be the issue to divide this wonderful town and community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Tansy, I'm the South Kingstown resident, I am the state representative of the southern part of Narragansett, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here tonight to beg of you to not turn down the state parking lot that's available by maintaining the maintenance of effort and maintaining the budget for the library and the sixth busiest library in the entire state. I want to make sure that you understand what's at stake if you fail to meet the maintenance of effort, and just what our community stands to lose. The actual numbers for the 2018 fiscal year indicate that we had 22,990 intra-library loans. Those are the books that we just heard about, that these young ladies, that my daughter, that all of the people in this community have requested as part of that library system be delivered to Narragansett. They were ordered for pickup here, and without meeting that maintenance of effort, those residents will no longer be driving to the library in the heart of our town, in the downtown area, with surrounding businesses benefiting from that. They'll be driving to South Kingstown to pick up their flip-flops, and they won't be getting those from Longlins. They'll be getting their coffee from some other coffee place that surrounds the North Kingstown or the South Kingstown libraries that they now he's forced to drive to. We're losing not only the opportunity for our children and our residents to have access to the hundreds of thousands of pieces, I mean, these are, this is the annual survey that the state gives for each library, that connectedness brings to our residents. We're losing out opportunities for them, we're losing out opportunities for our businesses in town, and I just, for the life of me, cannot understand, there's a lot about all of this that I don't understand, but this in particular, the slashing of the budget and all that we stand to lose because of this, it's incomprehensible, and I hope that you change your minds. Thank you.
Lori Rowland, 33 Leale Co. Road, Narragansett. I'd like to just review that the voters in Narragansett approved a bond to purchase and renovate. Ms. Lawler, remember, purchase and renovate. There will be almost certainly reimbursement by the state, because Narragansett residents have paid for library renovations throughout Rhode Island, and here we have an opportunity to renovate and improve our own building. There are private donations that have been pretty well pledged for over $2 million if the library goes to the Belmont site. There are corporate donations that are just waiting to give us money if we go to the Belmont site. So I would like to know, who voted to renovate the present library? Ms. Lawler did, I guess, that's one told that you're by yourself, wanted to renovate this present library, put a third floor, expand it, you can't use the bond because that's not what it was for. You're not going to get any reimbursement from the state because you've been told by the state that it still will not meet its standards. Private donations will not be coming in because people don't, the people of Narragansett do not want the library at the present site with a few parking spaces. Well, Ms. Lawler, it doesn't matter to you, I know, but all this time that you're wasting, instead of moving forward with the will of the people, the democracy of Narragansett, in 2008, when we first started talking about renovating and moving and getting a bigger library, the architectural fees were $4 million. In 2015, the architectural fees now are $7.75 million. Every day, you're wasting money, labor is going up, tariffs on China are doing an impact, the materials, and everything is, and you're wasting time. The workers, the architects, everybody's, of course, prices are increasing. And yes, you are getting revenue from the liquor store, but it certainly doesn't cover the $9. something thousand that we're living, believing of losing on interest every month by taking the state, the town's reserves, instead of using the bond money that you were supposed to use. Thank you for all the attention to yourself.
Susan Amber, Musso West Bay Drive. I've been up here quite a bit, and I agree with what Lori just said about the financial thing. I can't find anyone who can explain why we're giving up state money, why we're paying taxes to the state and other libraries are getting built. Mr. Lamy, you raved about Tippitin, well, they got the reimbursement from the fund that we helped fund. There's only five communities that have not drawn from that fund, and Narragansett is one of them. So it's like they're giving away our tax dollars to other towns, which is, the whole purpose is to share in, you know, making the state a better state, but it's our turn. And now to lose that money, I mean, there is no way to make sense. So another thing that came up in the meeting, something about it was up to your discretion, you could have changed some shuffling that was going up here. I mean, you had the opportunity to say yes for table, and to think about it. I don't understand it. And Ms. Lawler, you saying you don't care? I mean, I kind of brought up this thing about how, Mr. Mannix, you responded once to one email I sent. But Ms. Lawler, Mr. Lamy are the only elected officials that I have ever written to that I don't get courtesy of reply, the standard blah, 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 blah. And the most recent email I sent to you all was, did a lot of traveling, came back into a lot of small towns, and I was in a town of 3,000 people, Richfield, Ohio. And we went by this building, and I thought, oh my God, I think that's the library. So I had my husband turn around, he says, will you give it up with the library? But it's like I said once before, I have library envy. I mean, I went to Chicago, they had a fairly decent-sized library, but it wasn't enough, the new one's modern, it's gorgeous, my grandkids can go there after school, it's fantastic. But here's this little out-of-the-way town, and they have this, it was just beautiful, and it's three times the size of our library. And they're offering the same programs that ours offers in this miniscule place. They do the computers, they're doing financial talks, they're doing storytimes, they're doing, you know, anti-bullying things, they're helping kids with research, helping them find opportunities that may lead to them having scholarships. The library is the heart of the community, and I just can't change that. People aren't showing up. I mean, people were signing the petitions at Rocks, four people, only four people said, no, I don't want to sign, and only two of those people said, no, I'm not really for it. Two, and I think they came up to 75, 100 signatures, so the numbers are not there. And the fact that, you know, it just, I'm so disheartened by the whole thing. And I just hope that somehow this is going to change, and you're going to say, yep, we should do it, we should go for that Belmont building, we should get this money back to the town. That's it, I just, that's my hope.
I'm Robert, 25 Leale Squad, and I'll be brief. We claim that, we claim that there's this silent majority out there that's open on the library. Well, someone suggested that we have a meeting where the silent majority can come out by having a meeting like this at the high school or the junior high school, where we can see the silent majority come out. That's number one. Number two, I think the idea of not having architects go into that building is absolutely one of the foolish things that you as a council can do. Number one, the money for it, I would assume could, for the Number one, the money for it, I would assume, for the cost of it, would come out of the reserve fund. You would have a lot more information to decide whether or not the building is suitable or is not suitable, and maybe the five of you could get together and come to the same conclusion, either up or down. But even more so, if you have all those, the plans that the architect is drawing up, if you go to elect to sell the building, that will be an added value to the people who are buying the building, that they know what they can do with it, they have all the architectural drawings, they know how structurally sound the building is and so forth, which is going to add to the value of what the building would be listed for. So I implore you five to please let the, you know, the library, I'm sorry, let the library committee have people come in, have the town have people come in, take it out of the library fund and do this thing properly, you know, it will pay for itself in the long run. Thank you.
My name is Bill Bovon. I've lived about 45 years in this community. Many of you know me personally. I live in 16 Betty Hill Road, lived in the same place since we came here. Now, I want to tell you something. I want to tell you that you are missing the opportunity of a lifetime. You have in your hands the capability to put something in action that every person in this town would be just absolutely crazy about. Even if they never went to a library, they would say, this town is thinking of the townspeople and our reputation, that the things we produce in this town are good. Instead, you're getting reputations for being purely obstructionist. Instead, joining with the library people and discussing possibilities in a really serious way, you're just pushing it all underneath, and you're doing things behind people's backs. Your reputations, I hope, are, be more to than that. I mean, you have people outside here who are circulating petitions to get rid of you. You have an opportunity to bring about a thing in this town that maybe once, 50, even 50 years or 100 years, could be possible. You're halfway there, you got all the building, and yet, you're just like gloom. Anything that steps into this is in your gloom, stuck their feet to the ground. Give us something we can be proud of in this town. Everybody here has talked to you about what a library's worth. I don't know if you're listening, or if any of those values that we have about libraries are within you, but you personally are missing them all. What greater thing can you have than to create an institution that will outlive you? Thank you.
Meg Rogers, 68 Girls Court. So, a couple of years ago, back in 2016, right after, right after the election, I think it might have been the first or second town council meeting, one of the first actions that, one of the first agenda items that Ms. Lawler put up in council, supported by Mr. Mannix, was ripping apart our town's Economic Development Committee. And at the time, I was a Republican, and I'm like, what kind of Republican tears apart the Economic Development Committee? And then that same night, she voted to raise taxes on businesses. And I want to say that, congratulations, you've finally done something that's pro-business. You've finally stimulated the economy and helped the small business community, because you know what? Everyone here is shopping at Rocks. They're buying their burgers, their steaks, their chicken, everything they need this summer to grill over, and they're buying their grills at Jerry's. Now, my husband is a Jerry's fanatic, but there's a beautiful new Jerry's hardware up on Point Judith Road, and I recommend that everybody shop at Rocks and Jerry's if you're not doing that, because they love our library. So thank you, Councilwoman Lawler, for inviting up the small business community.
Laurie Kelly, Wildfield Farm Road. Every time we come to these meetings, it's one of the most disheartening things, is council people say something that is untrue, attach my name to it, and then don't allow me to speak to it. But honestly, I'm not even going to answer those things, I'll go directly to the press to give the facts and the audio tapes that prove that my memory is complete, because after listening to everyone tonight, and again, it's really passionate, wonderful people speaking eloquently and politely about the services of our town, it occurs to me that, Patrick, you are right, we should revote this whole mess, maybe we should just revote everyone's election and try and do it over. And I, of course, would have to get permission from my board, but I feel we would pay for that out of our reserve funds, so that the silent majority...
Good evening. Susan E. Panato, 9th Circuit Drive. I can't even believe I'm standing before this council, but we even, I have a couple of comments to make. I was elected in the town of Narragansett for 20 years. In 2016, I was the Narragansett Town Council President that probably led the town council to purchase the Belmont building for our new library in Narragansett. The discussion to this project began over 10 years ago, before most of you were even elected. The project was a collaborative effort between town managers, solicitors, finance directors, town staff, library board members, previous town council members, and input of thousands of people in the town of Narragansett. This was quantified, but we had the election in 2016, when the residents of this town went into the voting booths and cast their votes for the new library at the Belmont building. Over 67% of the residents supported the $5.8 million dollar bond to purchase the new building. We could debate whether the residents understood or not that the referendum was location-specific. We could debate that all day, but I will insult the intelligence of the Narragansett voters. I will just say that there were two options at the time. One was to renovate the existing or to purchase the building. When we received the projected cost of the renovations, we decided, as the town council and the library board, that we would pursue the Belmont building. That was the best option for the community. I sat at the table, I was the president pro 10 when Matty was the president. You said, sharpen your pencils, and we were going to go for it. I heard it, I was there. That's what happened. You promised it, that's what we were supposed to do. So, now, here we are, years later, the purchase of the Belmont building finally is planned. The current council completely changes the direction and votes to sell the building. Within the first two meetings of the new term, you decide you want to sell it. I can't believe it. I'm like, oh my goodness, is this true? Then, it continues to get worse. You're destructed by cutting the budget in half, in half. In doing that, you have dismantled our town library and the project that the residents of this town have waited over a decade for, which is just my vibe, like, as a retired town council president that led that charge, I just can't believe I'm doing it. It almost feels like it's a personal vendetta, because I did a good job and led the project here. Undoing all of what we have done. The actions of this council will be long remembered and will most definitely become your defining moments in the history of this town. I am sure, I'm not even sure of the endgame, you all are. I don't know what the plan is, I haven't heard another idea other than dismantle the project, but I'm sure of one thing, the residents of this town will never give up. They will continue to fight and be passionate about what they want, a library for this town, one of America's greatest institutions. You should restore the budget and move forward with the Belmont building. In doing that, you will be on the right side of history in Narragansett.
I'm a librarian in another town, I'm proud to be a librarian, I admire my colleagues in the field, I applaud everybody who spoke tonight, and I hope you will all be moved by the fact that every single speaker tonight spoke in favor of the library. If there's a silent majority out there, we didn't hear from them tonight, and it's 10 o'clock, a lot of people spoke, and I hope you, those of you who want to cut this funding, will be moved by the fact that so many people in the town come out and in support of it, and nobody tonight spoke against it. Thank you.
Paulson Frogo, 7 Women Circle. You know, elections have consequences. So, the town council that gets elected now, if you're not on it, you don't get to make the decisions. Why is nobody holding the library board accountable? You know, Jessie, Jessie, excuse me, see, this is why people don't come up and speak. I've been booed and jeered every single time I take the podium, every single time. Who needs that? People don't want that in their lives, okay? So, Jessie, you called it extortion, it's called negotiation, okay? Laurie Kelly just came up and said, let's take it out of our fund balance. That's a slush fund, okay? To do what they want. So, I challenge the library board, you know, when you point the finger of blame, three fingers point back at you. Why didn't you cut a deal with the town council? If this is so important, so impassioned, why are you not being held accountable? Because you've done an excellent job of spinning how horrible these three people are, and they've been dragged through the mud, I can't even believe it, you know? And so, there's a difference between extortion and negotiation. So I challenge the library board, for all your passions, come up here and negotiate a deal and get it done. You're just as responsible as the town council for getting this done. Thank you.
Sheila Sweeney, 115, Berry Trail, Narragansett. I just have a question for the board. Relatively new at these town council meetings, so I just wanted to ask you about the executive session, could you just explain to me a little bit about that?
So, executive sessions, typically we don't do a back and forth with these, but an executive session is where it's not an open meeting, and there's certain reasons under the open meetings that can go into the executive session. And the two big reasons are usually personnel, so if there's a discussion about hiring and firing to protect those people, litigation is the second big reason, and then another one is purchase and disposition of real estate, but there's a whole list. And it's to protect, it's to protect the public and sometimes individuals, so, and they're carved out of the statue.
So my understanding is, you talked earlier about the building, the Belmont building, they wouldn't discuss this because you don't have a plan, or it's not, you don't want to discuss the buyer, I'm assuming, in front of everybody? But you do all discuss what buyers are coming to the building, to the council, you do discuss that all together as five people, correct? So my question to you, and I've been to a couple of these meetings, and it seems that it's always a three to two vote. So I really was just curious, if you have this buyer, what's the possibility of that still being a three to two vote going forth, you know? I just, I just want to, you know, I'm just concerned, I mean, why have an executive session if you know, like, you're going to go one way and not the other? It seems that that's the way this board has been going. Actually, tonight, and I haven't been to many meetings, but tonight was the first time that I actually think I've been to a meeting where it was three to two in favor with Pat and Jessie and just out to vote against something, so I just would hope that there be more meetings like this, so, thank you.
Patrick Salinger, 48, Rose Hill. First, I'm very concerned about the library board trustee decision. You have to submit applications to the town and the state detailing how you intend to spend the money you're asking for, and it appears that they have not been spending the money that they've asked for. If they've been able to squirrel away $686,000, and I don't think it's the fact that you're not giving them the $800, something thousand dollars, because they have the money, they can transfer it all, I'm concerned about the action they've taken. I would really like to see the request, the request to the state and the request to the town, and exactly what they said, why they were asking for the money, and what they said they were going to spend it on. That's my concern, is they said, I believe they jeopardized their own state funding, not any actions of this town council. And I know it's a little abstract, a bad joke, I'll explain it to you later. The other thing is, you're lucky that people have very short memories, because I recall that you were totally against a new library, you would come to these town council meetings and say, no, let me finish, and say, and say, oh, library board wants a new library, but I told them, raise some money. Didn't you always say that? I kept telling them, raise some money. They haven't raised any money just yet. I mean, if they have, then I'd really like to see the commitments, okay? The other thing is, I was shocked to hear someone say that the architect fees are $7 million. Well, how much is this town library going to cost? I mean, $2.8 million for building, $7 million architect fees, we may have to build out the place, what are we talking about here? And the other thing is, all the people who've spoken about the good experiences they had at the library, they had them at our dinky little library. None of them needed a 21,000 square foot library to have a good library experience. Finally, where the heck is the school committee? Why aren't they here arguing for this library? They...
Because they don't want their budget cut.
Patty Arkwright, Library Director. I feel like I'm always defending my actions. I fill out the annual report each year, along with Laurie Kelly and the Finance Director. We certify that we spend the state money, that is what we do. I do not like being accused of not doing what we said we do.
Thank you.
It's exciting to see so many people in action about money, budget, paying attention to money and budget surplus as slush funds on assigned fund balances. And that's what I like to address a little bit here, is I rented to a police officer, so for one year, he was living in an apartment with his wife, but then a year, he couldn't save enough money to buy a house. And now I look at, I just was asked by another tenant, you owe me $20, I don't have any money to get a pack of cigarettes and some food for my kids until my wife comes tomorrow morning, she works all day. So obviously, he doesn't have any fund balance, he doesn't have any balance anywhere. And that's probably, another issue here is fund balance money. I look at, we have a fund balance, I think, I thought around 12%, but it could be 10% if I remember right, I brought this up before, we could have 10% to 16%, like if we're at 12, I guess, so we could get 2% off the fund balance, we could save maybe a couple million dollars, I don't know exactly how much. But part of this problem is fund balance, extra money, we got extra money, so we spend it, now we fight over it. And I would say, let's take and make all the departments trim their fund balance. And I say, "Let's take and make all the departments trim their fund balance." So now we can more carefully watch our finance. And I hope all these people would come and pay attention to the taxes and fund balances and where they're spending it. Not in a library, in every bar. Let's get activity like this, it's kind of nice. And the final, the final thing I want to bring up is justice for all, respectful of my tenants. They're among the tourist people in this town. And right now, the rentals, both rentals, the poor rentals, they have a tax bill that's forty percent more, because they're renters. So their taxes are forty percent more than others. And that's, that's not just, everybody should have the same taxes. And I guess because they want to label it commercial, because it's a rental with more than forty units, whatever it is. So it's more than forty units, but it's six-hundred-dollar rental. And here they are, being taxed on a rental of forty percent more than the normal resident would pay. That's not just. So we should be looking at those issues, not just one issue. Let's look at all the issues that we can make it just for all, and everybody pay attention to all spending. And right now, our focus is on surpluses, budget surpluses. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
A motion to retire to executive session from the town council, and the general laws, section forty-two dash forty-six dash four. I'm sorry. Come on up.
John Rogers, fifty-six Rodman Street. I'm encouraged by the earlier vote that the town council is willing to work with and the neighbors and everybody involved to hopefully resolve the water problem. I'd still like to read a few remarks for the record. We are for progress in Narragansett. We are for investment in Narragansett. We would like to invest in our house, and we can't do it for the continued water damage. We are concerned that the existing water problems in the neighborhood will impact the plans for the Rodman Street Business District. The water problem originates from the last spring, which is within the Business District. It impacts at least seven properties, four of which are within the Business District, including Caribou and Devistos, who spoke in the last meeting. We've been told it is a civil matter, not a town matter, but it is a town matter. The spring is on Continental Street. The simplest bolted red roof would be to send the overflow down Continental Street to Wood Street, instead of through three private properties to Rodman Street. But the town, so far, has refused to allow that. But hopefully, that's part of the plan. We've been told many times that an engineering study has to be done so that a building doesn't impact somebody else. Has one of, Mr. Vickers' recent developments impacted his neighbor, one of his neighbors? We've been told that it did, that he ended up having French drains in the neighbor's property.
So we... So we, you follow the law?
Yep.
My impact...
Not a question, just a statement.
I did not appreciate Councilman Murray placing the burden of blame on us, as my wife spoke in the last town council meeting, stating that the pipe was broken and that Durkin had offered to fix it, but we wouldn't let him. We were told the pipe could not be fixed and it needed to be replaced. Durkin's lawyer sent us paperwork to add him to an existing easement between our property and Janine Marsh's property. Also, an additional easement for seven-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet of our property and a similar additional easement on the Marsh property. That would have more than tripled the size of this area of the existing easement. The new proposed easement stayed there intended for the purpose of installing and maintaining any utility, drainage structures in favor of his property. There was no mention of just replacing the existing pipe. Our concern was that Durkin planned on developing his property and sending additional drainage, parking lot, lawn, to our properties. Councilman Murray should find out all the facts and all the sides of this story before speaking out in a public forum. I doubt that any one of the town council members would have signed those easements. We mailed Durkin paperwork on March ninth of two thousand fifteen that would have allowed him to replace the overflow pipe as long as he was responsible for any damage to our house or property. We never received a response. Durkin is already part of a three-property easement that includes an underground pipe that is connected to the Rodman Street storm drain. The town should work with that group to resolve the water problem in our neighborhood. Again, I appreciate the earlier vote, and I look forward to, hopefully, all of us working together to resolve it.
Thank you.
I'd like to submit copies of some of the documents that I mentioned.
You gave them to the town, quickly. Or is there anyone else? Janine.
Janine Marsh, fifty-eight Mountain Street. This good sweet thing, oh, gosh, we're going on for months. But first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Lima, Ms. Law, Mr. Mannix, and Mr. Pugh. Thank you so much for responding to my emails, or the whole neighborhood emails, coming up to view the property with boots on, sinking, climbing over fences, so, I thank you. Because you really had to see it. And when I went back to the planning board, way back when I was first signed, when I got the notice, I kept stressing over and over again, "You have to see it to believe it." When I first got the notice, the reason why I kind of stirred my curiosity was because there was no map included. I kind of looked, "This is kind of strange, I got to check this out." So I did. Fast forward, as time's going on here, numerous meetings, planning board, town council. I noticed, Ms. Mannix, that Mr. Murray is very concerned about... We're holding up Mr. Vickers. We're holding up Mr. Vickers. We've been waiting so long, it's been, I've been here twenty years. I don't even know, we've always had water in the property. But I will admit, the last six months, or a little bit longer, it has been worse because of Mr. Durkin doing the clearing at the back of my life. It's like a football field back there. All trees are gone, it's clear. So I say to myself, "With the library, you put the people first. With us, it's like it's this out-of-town developer." It makes me wonder. So I got to thinking. To me, I don't know, is this a conflict of interest, if anybody can vote on this issue? I'm just saying, to me, it's very clear. If there's any type of involvement, I just think it's a conflict of interest. And I'm going to stop people, or two of them, like those submitted to the town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, so we have a motion to retire to executive session from the town council, and the board, and the general laws, forty-two dash forty-six dash four, and forty-two dash forty-six dash five, subsection A. Litigation, litigation potential, in accordance with Rhode Island general laws, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, subsection A two. Collective bargaining, lease, complete PO, local three oh three labor contract, in accordance with Rhode Island general laws, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, subsection A two. And real estate acquisition, or lease of real property, former Belmont property, for public purposes, or for disposition of open legal property.